All right, we are going to call this meeting to order. It is 6:02. Our first item is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask the mayor to pray for us, if that's okay. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon the town of Keene. We ask that you be with our first responders and keep them safe as they carry out their daydy dolies. Be with us tonight as we gather here and help us to make good decisions for our town. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number two is public comments. This isn't part of the public hearing, this is actually just public comments. I didn't get any cards, but if anybody would like to speak about planning and zoning in general, not the public hearing portion, now is the time to do so, or forever hold your peace. I'm kidding. But anybody else would like to speak right now? You're more than welcome to. Go on three times, that's it. All right. Next is the public hearing. Okay. So I have to read this out, so give me just a second as I do that. So we're going to start the public hearing at 6:03. And it says, "Hold a public hearing to hear citizen comments concerning the zoning request change from the Kittle Property Group, Inc., regarding the following item. Zoning request change application received for a 21-point acre portion of the Hugh McCollum survey abstract 570, tract 12, within the city of Keene, Texas, from C2 General Commercial District, Office and Light Retail, to PD Planned Development District. The rezone will be based on MF multi-family zoning with variances of three-story buildings instead of two and four playgrounds instead of five." So we will now hear from anybody who would like to come up and take the podium.
If you want a little background on it, good evening, everybody. Basically, it's a 30-acre tract. Do we have those slides? And you can see it's that kind of triangular-looking one in the middle of the map there. So there's 30-acre parcel right across the street, which is just to the west of the Spanish Church. That's where tractor supply is going to be coming in. And then right across the street to the south is that other 30-acre parcel. And they had approached me and asked about doing a multi-family project there. And I say, "Well, we could probably entertain the idea if we keep that front portion commercial and maybe do the back portion of that property into multi-family." Because that back portion kind of butts up to County Road 317, so there's not a lot of high-traffic access there for commercial. So that's kind of what we've been working on for quite some months now, kind of back and forth with our conceptual plan and things like that. So it's always trying to find a nice balance between getting the city to grow, but in the proper way. So we've been trying to work on that. Keeping that portion commercial because it is right on Business 67. We've already lost a little bit of good prime commercial property, just some of these other developments that came in recently, so we're trying not to do that anymore. So I think that's ideal, keeping the front portion as commercial property. And then the back portion, I don't really see an issue of not having that whole piece commercial, just because of the access. So in their conceptual plan, go to the next slide. It might be kind of hard for you to see, but if you look to the right, the top right, you can kind of see access. So there's going to be an easement there, I believe it's 40 feet, because there's also a gas line right under there, a major gas transmission line, so you really can't build over that portion of it anyways. So that was the ideal place to put an access road from Business 67 to that back portion of that 20 acres. And then this just kind of lays out their buildings, where they're going to be, how many playgrounds we're going to have, they're going to have a clubhouse, parking garages if necessary, their trash refuse. So all of their conceptual plan is pretty much laid out on this plan here. And right now, it's looking at the total site as approximately 20 acres. They're looking at 252 dwelling units. Let's see.
How many?
252. It's right on there under. So you're looking at about 72 one-bedroom, 138 two-bedroom, 36 three-bedroom, and 18 four-bedroom apartments. They have a clubhouse, a pool, a bark park, or dog park, four playgrounds, one per five acres, but because it is slightly over 20 acres, that's why we need to ask for that variance, because our ordinance says any portion of five acres has to have a playground. So we're asking for that .1 acre or .8 acres of variance on one of the playgrounds. And then our ordinance also states that no more than two stories for multi-family, so that would be the other variance that we ask for in the planned development. And there are some of their conceptual drawings of what they would like it to look like on some of the other projects that they have worked on.
Come on up.
I'm LaRae Conley, and I live at 2620 County Road 317. My question is, is there access to that County Road 317?
Yes.
And what kind of barrier might be going up behind there?
As far as like a screening fence?
Yes.
Yes. If we can go back to that again.
Yeah, if you look at the screen now, you can see the access down on the southwest portion of the property there. Can you see that, ma'am?
Kind of where the triangle is, you can see where it says 1.75 acres is a detention pond, and then just to the left of that will be the access onto County Road 317. And I believe in our ordinance, it calls for a screening fence around any multi-family, so a screening wall would be required as well. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Yeah, they're going to have access to 317, and they're going to have access...
Excuse me, could you please give your name and address?
Oh, my name is Joshua. I'm owner of Arkot Transportation, just...
Okay.
Next to them.
Just to the west?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, they're going to have access from 67, too. Is that right?
Right. It'll be, if you kind of look at the map, it'll be in the top right, you can kind of see that little hook coming down.
Yeah, it's by the fence, they're going to have...
This is straight-in access, correct?
Yeah, they're going to have access through 317 and 67.
Right.
I think it's a great project.
Thank you. It looks like the main entrance is going to be off 67 because of where the clubhouse and all those features would be, would be my recollection based on this depiction here. Is that what you're, the vibe you're getting?
I have Jana, correct? From the Kittle group here, if anybody has any questions, she could probably answer those better than I could.
Okay. We have another speaker. Why don't we get all the speakers out of the way, and then Ms. Kittle, if she needs to answer any of these questions, she certainly can, so.
Sure, thank you. Troy. Paul Knott, 37-year resident of Keene. I recall when Miller Hall was built on the southwestern campus, and at that time, Dan, we had a ladder truck. And there was a variance given for three stories because Keene had a ladder truck. Keene no longer has a ladder truck. What, is it a variance, or what are we doing with that third story up there?
It's an apartment that's up there, especially.
Okay. You know, you drive down by Cleburne Ford, and you see that high-density housing, apartment housing there. Head toward Burlison, and Joshua's full of this housing now, so is Burlison and 731. I see this nothing more than high-density ghetto housing. That's how I see it. And that noise you hear, that's our founders turning over in their graves. This is never to be this way.
Any other speakers? Any questions for Mrs. Kittle, or well, or Mrs. Harmon with Kittle? I apologize, sorry.
Yes, I do, please, Ms. Harmon.
Come on up.
Our planned development district ordinance requires a conceptual plan and a developmental plan.
Yes.
Or a detailed site plan. Do you have those prepared and ready to review for us?
We have the conceptual plan. It was my understanding that we were proposing the planned development at this juncture, and then we would come back and go through all the fine details when we have that.
Well, the whole idea of rezoning a piece of property to a planned development district is to know what we're rezoning for. And without a conceptual plan...
It's right there in front of you.
No, I don't think it is.
Well, that's your interpretation.
Well, the surveyor says it's a site plan, okay? So I don't think that means conceptual. And I'll argue it with you.
Okay.
To, you know...
I think that what we have at this point meets the conceptual plan requirements as far as what I read there.
In establishing a planned development district, the city council shall approve and file as part of the amending ordinance appropriate plans and standards for each planned development district. During the review and public hearing process, the city council shall require a conceptual plan and a development plan or detailed site plan. Says the conceptual plan, this plan shall be submitted by the applicant. The plan shall show the applicant's intent for the use of the land within the proposed planned development district in a graphic manner, and shall be supported by written documentation of proposals and standards for development. We don't even know if you're making log cabins or high-rises, okay?
Did you not see the pictures, Mr. Jackson?
Those are renderings, and that doesn't mean squat as to what they're going to do.
This is...
I'm going to continue, I'm going to continue, sir.
Fine.
A conceptual plan for residential land use shall show general use, thoroughfares, and preliminary lot arrangements. For residential development, which does not propose platted lots, the conceptual plan shall set forth the size, type, and location of buildings and building sites, access, density, building height, fire lane, screening, parking areas, landscape areas, and other pertinent development data. Do you know when you can have that available?
Does the site plan not show most of that?
It does.
That's what we updated recently to meet all the requirements. We're trying to stick with multi-family except for those two items. That's the intent. The three-story, which actually the multi-family zoning requires, I think it's 35 is the maximum height, and we'll be under that maximum height requirement, it's just not in two stories and three stories.
Well, in my opinion, there's no point in considering what the multi-family residential ordinance requires, because we're voting on changing it to a planned district development, planned development district. My apologies.
Are you done?
If she, if that's all she has, yeah.
Yeah, you can, you'll have to let me know, because that was my understanding, that we came today and we discussed, you know, what the intention was and what we were proposing to build, and then if we, before we would have building permits issued to us, we would go through the exact contractual agreement of the planned development, so...
All right. And that's what the ordinance states, it's the city council. And also, if you read further down in that ordinance, it talks about if city council feels that the conceptual plan is accurate enough or has enough information, they can limit it to just one public hearing.
May I ask the mayor something? Mayor Parrish, do you believe this is adequate information for us to review?
Do I have some information?
Take the podium, so that way...
Do you feel this is adequate information for us to go forward with possibly rezoning this property to a planned development district?
I don't know if I have studied it enough to know. I don't see a conceptual plan in here. I agree with you, I see a site plan, and I see pictures of what the development is supposed to look like.
Does it say anything about the standard?
So it'll be up to the city council if they want to move forward with what information that has been provided to us.
See, you have to remember that we're talking about rezoning this to APD. We're not talking about approving the planned development, which requires the conceptual plan.
Mr. Martin, you don't approve a rezoning of a planned development district without the planned development district plan in front of you.
When we did Sunset Ridge, it has changed 25 times from their conceptual plan before it was finally approved.
And that's allowed?
The first...
That's allowed in the ordinance.
The first step, I'm sorry, what?
That's allowed in the ordinance.
Right. So I don't understand what your battle is about. What more information do you want?
We don't know the construction type. We don't know the vegetation plans. We don't know the screening. All of that should be presented.
It's all spelled out, what is required in the multi-family ordinance. All that has to be done.
It's pointless to keep bringing up the multi-family ordinance, because we're not approving a multi-family ordinance, we're approving a planned development district.
And just like when we did those other developments, we did a PD for Bristol Oaks, we did a pre-D for Sunset Ridge, we did a PD for the Canyons, we did a PD. They were based on single-family three zoning, and if you look at the PD ordinance, it tells you, you must base it off of one of those, and then list the variances that you're asking for, and that's exactly what we did.
You've given me the planned development district ordinance right here, and I'm looking at it right here. I've been reading it off to you.
Okay. I'm not arguing that you're wrong about what's in the ordinance. I'm saying this is acceptable to staff as a conceptual plan of what they want to do.
If that was accept, if that was accepted by staff, why do we not have a staff report?
I just gave it to you.
Would you show it to me? Do you have it on the...
No, I do not.
Well then...
Does it require one in there?
What did you give to me?
I just told you what we've done. I just gave you a history and a background of what we've done and what we've talked about.
All you've done is printed out a couple of ordinances.
Were you not paying attention when I was talking about at the beginning?
Is this an oral staff report? Is that what I'm to gather?
Yes.
And you couldn't bother to put it in writing?
Does it require it?
I don't know, you just said...
It's a public hearing, so it is livestreamed, and we are, it is being recorded, so...
I appreciate that.
Whatever he says is going to be on record.
That's fine with me.
There you go. I have some more questions for you, Mrs. Harmon, if you'd like to come back up, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Parrish. I was looking at the units, and I was looking at all of the, I did have some questions, so are there going to be sand areas in the playground areas? I'm just trying to ask that question, and for the most general thing that everybody worries about is cats, you know, using that as their own little litter box, so...
We don't use sand. We do use, it's a permeable, because of accessibility requirements that we'll have to meet.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's not sand.
Okay.
There's no sand in them.
That was just one question.
From a maintenance standpoint, we wouldn't want to have sand.
My second question was on this back entrance that you have on 317, is that, are those both going to be gated accesses? Are we planning on a gated community of some sorts or no?
Our intention at this point is to have the primary access off of 67.
Okay.
And that will be gated.
Okay.
And the entrance from 317 will be just an emergency fire access. We won't use that.
Okay, so it'll actually be a locked gate unless fire department needs to be there?
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that's pretty standard, but I wanted to just verify that. I saw the gates, and of course, they show that they're open, like they're accessible, but that was the question I had, so...
So just the one entrance in and out, and it will be gated?
Okay, okay. So for everybody that just asked that question about the access on 317, there will be hardly any access, because the gates will be locked, so most will come off of 67, so... Everybody's clear. And I'm assuming that it will be grass, not artificial turf on all the other area, on all the common areas that are, okay?
Yes, no turf.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. If there's anything else, if, we're still in a public hearing, so if there's anything you'd like to ask, go ahead, ma'am.
Will it all be built at one time, or will it be in phases?
It'll all be built at one time. It's typically a minimum of about 24 months it'll take us to build it, so. And it depends on the fire marshal and all of that, how we start leasing. Sometimes we can have a couple of buildings in, and if there's enough of the roadway and where it's safe to go ahead and start leasing those buildings, that'll happen, otherwise it'll be completely built before we can lease.
I'm just going to repeat that because you weren't up...
I'm sorry, I probably...
So the question was, is it going to be built at one time? And the answer is yes, but it will take 24 months to complete, according to her answer, so...
Around 24 months.
And then we had one more hand up back here. Mr. Easley. You can just stay off to the side, ma'am.
Chuck Easley, 606 Pine Bluff. Do you know the total number of beds? Total number of bedrooms? I've done rough numbers, but I haven't... 252. 252 units, but there are one, two, three, and four bedrooms.
It's on the site plan.
It shows on there how many one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms.
It shows the bedroom, but not the beds.
You couldn't have done that math while you were sitting down over there?
I don't have a pencil. Came up without a pencil. But it's, it's like 600-some-odd beds, so we're looking at over 700 additional citizens of Keene. So, but it's about 600 beds, about 700 additional citizens of Keene.
Assuming that they all come from outside of Keene, I guess. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but it's still potential citizens. It's also potential needs for fire department. Has the fire department done a full study on this, and their needs for this building?
A full study, no, but our fire marshal and third-party plan reviewer have looked at that. As presented at this particular point, there'll still be some more work to be done.
And the fire department can handle it? Is it going to stress out our existing systems?
Board, would you like to go first?
Yeah, come on.
Also, Mr. Easley, I come up with 504 beds if each one is occupied.
But we got the double occupancy on singles and... Good evening.
Thanks, sir.
I'm here to answer some questions, and some of it may get rather complex, but in brief, the fire marshal has looked at this particular plan, and I believe it's gone to a third-party plan reviewer, as presented. So tonight, we're talking about a zoning change and potential variance requests allowing going from two-story to three-story build, and then adding some additional playgrounds. So based on the drawings that we've seen, the fire department has no issues with a zoning change. As far as going from two-story to three-story, as a variance from the adopted ordinance, I will say, as fire chief, we are committed to protecting lives and property in the city and surrounding areas of Keene. We're going to do everything we can. We have mutual aid contracts, so we know that we're going to get help. The issue comes in not with our ability to fight fire there, as, I mean, we're going to take care of what we've got to take care of. We're going to save people, and we're going to do everything we can to fight any fire there. However, I must let this board know, our citizens know, and our elected officials know, that this could, in the long term, have a negative impact on the insurance rates for our citizens. Again, we're going to take care of any problem that's there, but approximately every 10 years, a city will have a study conducted by the insurance services office. They're an organization that sets the insurance rates for a community. We are due for ours in about two years or so. The city does not request it, the city cannot deny it, it's going to happen. They come in, they do their own private study, and they set the insurance rates. So looking at, and I'm going to quote from the fire suppression rating schedule provided by the insurance service office, I'm looking at section 540A, and I've sent this through email, so I'm pretty sure that you have a copy of that in front of you. Individual ladder or service response areas with at least five buildings of three stories or 32 feet or more in height, defined as ground to eaves, or with at least five buildings that have a needed fire flow greater than 3,500 GPM, or with at least five buildings meeting any combination of those criteria, must have a ladder company. That's saying that we would have to have a ladder truck. In years past, the city of Keene did own one, but that has since been decommissioned, and we have not had one in a very long time. When no individual response area needs a ladder company, a fire protection area needs at least one ladder company, if buildings in the fire protection area meet the criteria above. I can definitively say that our community has surpassed that number of five. We've got more than those five buildings. So adding to that is, we're just adding to the issue. Long story short, I have no issue allowing this variance, but our citizens need to know that unless the city spends money to buy an aerial apparatus and staff it, insurance rates are going to go up.
Could you hold this for a moment?
Sure.
Could I ask the city secretary, did you have a, did you announce a possible quorum for this meeting with city council members?
It wasn't not announced, but we do have a forum.
No, I'm saying, we have, we have four council members in present, which creates a quorum of city council. Did you make an announcement that that might be a possibility?
We did not, but they're not discussing them. They're allowed to attend, but not discuss.
It's open to be, this is an open meeting.
I know what the Texas Open Meeting Act calls for. Thank you. So, Chief, isn't water supply more of a concern with the ISO rating than fire protection?
Water supply is a factor in that, and as far as determining the, what everybody refers to as ISO rating, it's technically called the public protection classification. There are more than 700 variables that go into that, and it's a massive algorithm that this organization uses to determine what our PPC would be. As far as water supply for this particular development, again, no issue with that, as long, no issue with any construction there, or at this particular point, any... construction there, or at this particular point, any variance request as presented, provided that the builders and developers comply with all adopted ordinances, codes, laws, regulations, et cetera.
Well, from a one to ten, can you tell us what our ISO rating is currently?
Currently, ours is a three, inside city limits.
Okay. And the proximity of a quint in Cleveland under a mutual aid agreement, or the, a quint in Alvarado under a mutual aid agreement, does that count?
It may help, but I do believe that they're outside of the service area. So anything more than two and a half miles away could negatively affect us. So there is a possibility that the one in Cleveland could help as partial points. But I won't know that until they come in. I don't know their, I don't know how they do that algorithm. Seven hundred plus variables, and a lot of calculus involved to come up with a simple one, two, three through ten.
Right, okay. Thanks, sir.
And three, meaning that's on the better side?
Correct. One is the best, ten's the worst. We are at a three, which is phenomenal for our.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody who doesn't know what that ISO rating means or understands.
So not only do they look at how a fire department is able to service the community, typically, you think of it as a, they're gonna come in and what's the risk, and then they determine what those rates will be based on that. So fire department plays a big part in that, but so does water supply. It's bundled in, and they come up.
Well, that was the only question I had for you, was how far away is the nearest, like in Cleaver, 'cause I'm sure that they have three stories, so they have to have, I'm sure they have a, a ladder truck. How, what's the closest ladder truck to, to that site? Do we know?
Approximately three and a half to four miles.
Okay.
If they put it in that station. They are a completely disorganized, they can move it wherever they think they need to. They're not gonna put it there to make Keene happy.
To meet our needs.
They're gonna meet their own needs. Additionally, one was just to the city of Alvarado, it's being funded for and provided by the Johnson County Emergency Services District, and it's at their fire station. It is just now being added into what they're doing there. That's probably what, seven or eight miles away, so. It's available, but it is outside of the ability to really help keep our insurance rates low.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
One gentleman.
I know, but do you have a question for the chief? Okay, go ahead. Come on up. Sorry, I wasn't trying to negate you here, I just wanted to.
Devin Conley.
What's your name, sir?
Twenty, Canterbury three seventeen.
Mr. Conley.
My question, yes, my question. On the fire main on sixty-seven, thirty, or three seventeen, or both, to, to take care of that? Water conditions, yes.
A water main?
Yeah.
That'll be through the water department. More likely than not, it's gonna come off of sixty-seven and tie in with anything off of three seventeen. It'll be a loop system.
So it's a fire main as well, right?
The, the fire main, yeah. So for facilities such as this, sprinklers. Again, we'll have to look at all those plans and then make determinations, but the needed fire flow will be calculated by their engineers. Water department will make sure that it's supplied appropriately.
Thanks, sir. So ba, based on what he was asking, I, I know that, I'm not trying to ask any more questions in relationship to that, but the understanding is, is that, yes, we're just trying to get the plat, we're, we're just trying to rezone this property today. All of those other questions we can ask at a later time, because it may need a lift station for sewer, it may need God knows what else, but those will all be answered at a spec, another time. This is, we're not really, I don't wanna get too detailed on the building side itself, because we, those are, there's still too many unknowns, and we don't have a drawing for that anyway, so. Really, this is just a rezoning, so just keeping that.
Right, there's several, several steps to the process, and the first step to the process would be to have the property properly zoned with those variances, and the only way to do those variances is through a planned development. So once the zoning is done, then we start getting into the actual meat and potatoes, so to speak, of the planned development. What are, what is all gonna go into it? They still have to meet all the electric codes, fire codes, all those codes, our civil codes, the drainage plans, all that stuff. We'll all go through our civil engineers after it's designed by their civil engineer, so. This is just basically the first step, is do we wanna rezone this to a planned development for multifamily purposes?
Okay. All right, we, we are still in public hearing, so if anybody's like to get up and say anything, you're still more than welcome to. We got, we got two, so. Did you, did you need to speak again, Paul?
Have impact fees, are they applicable to this project?
Yes. We haven't got to that point, but yes, impact fees are now in effect. And one thing to note, that this is Johnson County Special Utility District's water CCN, it's not the city of Keene's water CCN. It's our sewer CCN, but it is not our water CCN.
So we will have to come up with.
All the, all the water aspects.
That whole, yeah, like we did on that last subdivision. We'll have to go through that whole ordeal again.
Correct.
Okay. Did you need, did you, go ahead, sir. Come on up.
Property that we're, that you guys are referring to, that seems to be downhill towards my property, and I have had a wash issue there for a while, and the ditches on either side and that. Is that gonna be an issue?
It'll, well, they're not allowed to increase the water flow downstream. That's why you see the kinda, the one point seven five acre pond in there. Again, that's just a conceptual plan, which will help detain any water that has shed off that property and let it out, no more than it's currently going now.
Excellent. Second question.
Go ahead.
Sewer, I have a line that you put in across the back of my property. Will they be making a new one, or will they be joining with that one?
We'd have to get into the guts and the details of all that, but more than likely, it would tie in along three seventeen, because it does kinda slope down that way. And we know it doesn't go uphill.
Sorry.
Well, actually, it comes, there's two pops on my property. One of them goes downhill, and the other one goes, it gets bumped back up.
Correct, one is a, a force main, correct. It all goes downhill to basically behind Fun Town Harvey.
Across my property again?
Uh, no, they shouldn't. It should be able to tie into that wherever, and again, we'd have to get in there and make sure that the line size is adequate and all that other good stuff.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any other questions? All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing at six thirty-seven. And I should write that down. Now, it's following that public hearing, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission may review, consider, or take possible action on the rezone request and variance request from the Kittle Property Group, Inc. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I move to table the zoning request change application received for a twenty-one point eight acre portion in the Hugh McCollum Survey Abstract five seventy tract twelve within the city of Keene, Texas, from C two General Commercial District Office and Light Retail to PD Plan Development District. The rezone will be based on MS multifamily zoning with variances of three-story buildings instead of two, and four playgrounds instead of five, until all requirements of Division eighteen PD Plan Development District have been met and approved by our contractual planner.
All right, so you, you have a motion to table this. You didn't give a timetable. Are you just wanting to make sure that all those items that you just asked for happen before we, before it gets back to us?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to table it. Does anybody wanna second that?
I believe we should second it. I second it.
Okay. We have a motion to table it. We have a second. Any more discussion on that? And I guess I'll throw my two cents in there. I'm, I feel, you know, I, I share the concerns of the chief and with the the impact that that might cause us in our insurance rates, and I kinda understand that. I feel like if we have two years to mitigate that, it's probably a good year out from even being built, so, which I think gives us a little time to work on those issues, so that way we can keep our ISO rating, or shift it somehow to where we get help from the other towns. With the access to this development being that it's going to be a gated, gives me a little bit more of a sense of safety, that we're not gonna have just random people coming in and out of this facility that don't live there, so. For the town people that live here, I feel like that's gonna be something comforting to them, right? Knowing that their kids are safe in their own playgrounds, or in the pool areas, or even at the clubhouse. However, they wanna facilitate that clubhouse, you know, there's, there's gonna be amenities that they're gonna wanna have that their kids feel free to do. So I would be in favor of tabling it. I would be more in favor of approving it tonight. And not just because I understand that the city council's going to be doing the same thing on the third, but I feel like this thing should get pushed forward to the next phase. Then we can direct Mrs. Harmon and the Kittle Group to do some of the things that, that Keene is asking based on the actual drawings that they bring us. So my, my vote would be not to table it, it would be to approve it tonight. So.
Are you taking a vote?
I, I will. I just, I'm, I'm still asking for, we, we, we're doing discussion right now, so. So. Anyway. So I'll, I'll call for a vote. So the motion was to table it. All in favor, say, raise your hand? All in favor that don't wanna have that? All right, the motion carried to table it. Well, that is all we had for you tonight. There is another meeting at seven o'clock, if you'd like to stick around. The time is six forty-three, and we are adjourned.